Yes, the camera so.
Does that have a name?
No.
You're not telling me any of that either.
Four.
Yes, it does.
Aaron, it's it's not something.
The Catherine Lake Catherine, Lake Catherine.
No, yeah, but Brian. Does this pond have a name?
Lake Catherine.
It does.
Lake Catherine.
I've gone around this pond, but yeah.
But but it's not official.
No, it is. It's on the map.
Yeah, it's on the map, but I've always seen it called Lake Catherine in all of the subdivision blocks.
I think I have a thought game here.
The thing is, it's it's not a a real lake. I'm just a beaver dam and a big one.
Well, it used to be a lot nicer before all the beaver dams got lost.
Well, it got blown up, yeah.
Cause they were poaching all the beavers.
Blown up. Blown up by the state of New Hampshire.
Oh, really?
The beaver dams were were blown up with dynamite in the thirties by the state of New Hampshire.
Okay.
All the way down. Is this the Red Lake used to be a huge lake all the way down? That's what I was told.
Okay, well, well, there's there's not. Well, then they got busy after the.
That's. That could be huge. Well, I love my people. I don't. How they bunch of I leave them alone. I don't want to watch them. What am I opening up? Uh, we'll discuss this.
This is all on.
That's all yours. We have one. That's your uh, and. Yeah, look. Jins Lake.
This is Perk.
With a K.
With a K.
Yeah, what happened?
Lake Catherine with a K.
Was it related to the Belleville family? They were the ones that had all their names all over the.
Yeah.
But it but it wasn't one of the fields.
Is that who's selling?
I got back in the house.
Okay, so that's a. Yeah, and there's a couple pages. This is back in.
Oh, that too.
I mean, Lou Barone before Brendan.
Um, those ladies, somebody involved.
No, and that there's that lady, the lady that had the property in the U R, okay?
Do we know who?
Yeah, before they tore all their house down.
And we don't know what it has.
Sal out there, right? Or that.
I was wondering.
There's a woman there.
Cause I've heard something from.
I think. Louber had a like.
Heard it was the brother of the guy that owns the she's. You know, he put a convenience store in.
Yeah, I heard it real deep. The real deep was that. But she's uh.
I heard a butcher shop and I heard John shop.
Roxanne said it's Indians of some sort, Pakistanis or Indians of.
So then I got brother of the guy who she's.
Yeah, huh? Okay.
Which I think would be one of us.
Yeah.
It's commander.
We're online.
Mm-hmm.
We're online. Are we ready at seven? Alright, let's call the board. Uh, so. August sixth, two thousand twenty five planning board. Um, we'll call we have Larry Roll, fifth tonight in attendance. And Aaron Mc Ian, we have John Raam, myself, Joe Morgan, our select board liaison, Kim. Burke Hammer and our new secretary for the planning board, Sharon Gray. Thank you, Sharon, for stepping up for that. Um, okay. Couple changes. We're gonna formalize um, these meetings a little differently, okay? Um, first of all, the the idiocy that happened at the last meeting. Um, it's not gonna happen again. The planning board does not need to have. Um, not the last meeting, but. Um, the planning board does not need to have a public forum. There is no reason to have a public forum. We're on a select board. Um, we're not here to take any public comment. If if somebody from the public wants to speak to the planning board. They would request to be on the agenda if that's any of the town. Um, so. We're gonna create a policy that says that if you want to be on the planning board agenda for the month of September. As an example, for the first week in September. You need to have your request in uh, to town clerk. Uh, or the person in the office to put on the planning board for for the fifteenth of the month of the week.
Mine needs to be written, no.
I'll just sniff this from him.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I might have. Well. We do have um, policies and procedures for the planning board, which we did uh, adopt. So it would just be more efficient to those policies.
Through the through those policies, right then, okay? And I think that the fifteenth of the month before gives us two weeks to look at stuff.
Right.
So that if I see something in the folder when I stop by or process or something in the folder, I can swing by, I can get it, I can get it scanned in and disseminated to the board so that we have. Uh, that information before the next meeting, okay? Um, so at the bottom of the agenda, we've got a couple of notices. Um, which talk about public comment, um, that we're not gonna be doing any public comment. Reason to do it. Um, all the business that comes before the planning board is supposed to be planning board business, so. There's. There's no reason to turn it down. That's the select.
Alright, you know, that that was truly an unusual occurrence of that that character showing up. I mean, in all the years I've been on the planning board, nobody's come to work.
Hundred percent.
Being held, hundred percent.
Um, so.
I don't see it as that big of a.
Um, it's it's. So in municipal government. You create policies to avoid policies. So having had this policy, I could have simply said, this is a public comment. They didn't have the they didn't have the ability to do it. So. That's what we're gonna do. And then, um. As far as the um, the roll call, minutes administrative business. Under administrative business was supposed to be everything that we're gonna talk about for the night. Um, we'll make changes to that. We had an issue and and I asked him to to let us know, but. Uh, we need to have a a person that's responsible for posting the the agendas on. That cloud. Um, I usually send in the planning board agenda on Thursday before the Tuesday before the Tuesday. I send it in Thursday before the Wednesday meeting. I sent the agenda in last week. The ball got dropped. Um, it was posted last night at five forty six. Because if it hadn't been posted, we wouldn't have meeting. So that's why you don't see anything. It's them on him. Um. And we'll fix that next month moving forward, right, Kim?
Yep.
Get that thing here. Okay, so the three things that we wanna discuss tonight. We would like to get an update. Him has prepared an update for us on the things that have passed in Concord signed by the government. That impact the town. We wanna go over the the remaining items for chapter six. So if Aaron, if you have the ability to put that up on the screen, chapter six. I think it's just a spreadsheet thing, right? We'll sign it. And then we have this information here that we just passed out. This all stand out. This is probably information for chapter six.
That that is. That is chapter six.
Chapter six first, that's good.
Okay, so we're gonna do that first and then, um, and then the third item that we're gonna talk about. Um, was the ordinances and um, some other things now. Did I, did you guys get a copy? Did I send a copy of the rough draft growth management ordinance that I wrote?
We did. I saw it.
What'd you think? Um.
I think actually we do that closely. This game gets like.
So the town attorney came back and liked it.
Really?
Which surprised me too. Um. However, she made a suggestion of two minor changes. And I had. I had made the request for somebody to go back and say, can you get me those changes and get me the full um, you know, response for tonight? And I don't have. So I'm gonna reach out to Jane and myself tomorrow and and see if she can send that to me so that I can facilitate that. Um. This is the third. It's uh.
Jane Pitt.
Oh, Jane Taylor, yeah. It's listening to their phone. Yeah, huh?
Yeah, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I deal with Matt. Um, their firm too, sorry.
But Jane has this, right?
Yes, Jane has.
So I'll I'll get in touch with her and we'll. Back here. And then, um. We also should talk about uh, the C I P and find out where the select board is on that and what this planning law on that, so we should.
I've been wanting to know about that as well for school stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
We can talk about that now if you want.
Good. Alright, wait. What the hell? Um, oh, excuse me, townspeople. Roll call. Did we approve previous?
No, we're not there yet.
Not even there yet.
Not there yet.
Roll call.
We're because the because the items. You know, because the items weren't listed on the agenda. I haven't heard of any of those items.
Alright, alright.
So now.
We don't have any.
Aaron, that's very, very good of you. Now let's. Let's follow that. Let's let's go back and let's approve the minutes from uh, sixteen.
Yes, but I, Mr. Chairman, I didn't have any minutes to review.
Oh.
I don't have any minutes either.
No.
Unable to review in a few minutes.
Yes, so I make a motion that we table the minutes from the sixteen.
So. All wasn't saved.
Alright.
Alright. So take the minutes are table, approval of the minutes is tabled until our next meeting. And then we'll have to craft some minutes for that and get them disseminated, right?
So are those the ones that I took that somebody was supposed to do something with? I don't, nobody told me.
We'll get you that. Okay. So then, um. We can go back to. We can go back to Kim. Uh, C I P.
C I P. So there's two C I P animals. While it is a board of. Many department members and heads. One is the planning board. With input from all departments and partnerships. Both the growth management C I P act be uh, approved by the townspeople at town meeting. Um, my suggestion, as we're all under a time crunch, as we all know, because our block runs out at the next March. Um, would be that we work on a C I P as the planning board. Getting the information from the school, getting the information from the budget committee, um, and presenting it. Basically. Speaking with the planning board, speaking and speaking with the select board, speaking with everyone else, um, and just gathering the information, then just presenting it done. This is what we have. We did this because of. The urgent need to to have it done within this month. By March.
Are you absolutely sure that that's the idea and has to be approved by the town?
Legislative body. Yes.
And we didn't already approve that as a town?
We did not.
We didn't reserve.
Okay, so. If you don't have a C I P, if you can't approve it through a public hearing. It has to be voted. You can't vote on a growth management ordinance, same thing. You must have a master plan and capital improvement plan in place prior to voting on.
Yes.
The growth management.
But we can do, we can do a master plan at how we're here.
Yeah, I understand that, but if you have a C I P. You can't bring GMO to the March election without a C I P in place first.
So then we would have to hold a special election.
You do not know all these initials?
The C I P is a capital improvements plan.
Okay.
GMO is a growth management ordinance.
Thank you. I'm sure they don't either.
Is there any chance this is one of those things where it already exists and we just haven't been doing it for three years?
Um, I have been, as I was telling the chairman, in my spare time. Um, reading through all of the minutes of the various boards. I started on the select board. I will go back and start through the planning board. After I'm done with the select board, I'll be reading the town reports. So I have been from nineteen hundreds on all the town warrants. Up to present day, I am on the select board minutes that are back there up to twenty twenty two. Once I am current, I will hit the planning board minutes and go through them all. And then I'll hit the zoning board minutes. Times out through the mall.
Don't know.
It's it's been very informative.
Yeah.
I'm sure. Through lots of thought.
Yes, lots of thought.
So I'm confused why the town would have to vote on capital improvement. This is not a spend in money.
Yeah, the RSA says it.
Cause I I and I realize.
So you're you're budgeting for. The capital improvement.
But doesn't the select board still have the responsibility of some?
You're not though. You're you're only planning for future. It's a plan. It's not a budget. We'll be careful.
I couldn't couldn't figure it out either, but it.
It doesn't make any sense.
Makes sense legislative, but.
That's a problem.
And a special meeting would require a fifty percent term of less. Or something. Most people.
That probably understand or turn on the floor.
Same.
So I I don't know how to get the.
Where the era of the C I P passing. At the same meeting as the GMO? I have that, yeah, I wouldn't think so, right?
I don't think if you explained it.
I don't, I don't think it's like, I think you, I don't think you can bring it before the legislative bottom until you have the other two things in place. That's everything that I've read. That's what that says.
So growth management. Any ordinance imposing such control will ask the preparation, adoption by the planning board of a master plan and a capital improvement program.
No.
So.
Does it have to be a capital improvement committee that links the plan?
No, that that.
I think you're gonna find that it doesn't have. Doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay. Capital improvement plan. In a municipality where the planning board has adopted the master plan. The local legislative body may authorize the planning board to prepare and amend a recommended program. Of municipal capital improvement projects projected over a period of at least six years. The local legislative body. RSA six seventy four calling up. Authorization.
But we could just put that in March.
Law, legislative body. Let's just go to the uh. Select board and say this is what from the light that had been.
Not the governing direction. It's RSA six seventy four.
Six seventy four. The governing. I mean, you don't.
So where does this say that? We can't just do that. This means we have to do something else before it could seem like.
In order to, in order in the state of New Hampshire, we're going to pass a growth management ordinance. You must have in place first a capital.
Oh.
And a co- master, correct, a master plan.
Okay.
So as an alternative, the legislative body may authorize the governing body to appoint a capital improvements program committee. Which s- so it's either. The planning board. Or it's a. Committee.
But the legislative body has to vote on both of these.
They have to authorize it.
You've put it on one, you're right.
That's why you don't want that.
That's the, it's not.
I don't believe it.
I think that would be a question. The sole purpose and effect of the capital improvements program should be to aid the mayor or selectman and the budget committee in their consideration of the annual budget. I I agree, yeah.
But you have to have a C I P before you can manage it.
Oh.
Looking for that.
And and in the end, the law.
Run.
What?
War run, yeah. Hmm, throw that? I agree.
What's it, what's, somebody explain to me what they think most for. Why, why would this, why would they proceed the other?
I have no idea what their thought process is of during that. I think what they're trying to do is they're trying to say that. You effectively can't do a growth management ordinance and justify it unless you have a capital improvement plan. That is impacted by the growth of by excessive growth of town. So we can't make the claim that you don't have the infrastructure, you don't have the police and the fire or everything else to handle the development because you don't have any. That sound about right?
Yeah. But somewhere in the master plan, don't we say we won't have a police department? We have no intention to do with it.
So it's even worse than that, Larry, because. This capital improvement plan for the town of Freuden seriously would be two pages. I I can't imagine it's gonna be anymore because it's all roads.
Yeah.
Yes.
Are there um. Expections, intentions and.
And the school doesn't have any any bearing on the capital improvement plan for the municipality. No?
No, it was separate.
Right.
I just suggested that the school board be on that committee with if we're shared committee, right? Well.
So. That's a sticky wicked.
Yeah, sorry, but I knew that was a question that was gonna come up, so I researched it.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe the question to the lawyer should be, how can we do, we're trying to do this, how do we do it?
I think, yeah. Well, she's gonna say you're gonna have to have a special meeting for GMO. And then you're gonna have to fifty percent admire.
Are there aspects of the GMO that we can push through under a different type of ordinance?
An innovative lab control?
No, but what we could do is we could, but actually what we could do. Is we could extend.
A law.
Moratorium.
Mm-hmm, we can.
We could vote at town meeting to extend the moratorium for one more year.
And ask them to give us the capital improvements committee because we're working on a growth management ordinance. So you need to ask a lawyer if we can continue that. Because we can show a need.
Mm-hmm.
So as long as we can do that, I think we can make. Everybody understand that we, that's a necessary need. Um. Get the capital improvements committee, work on that and the growth management ordinance same time.
So really, all we need to do is have a warrant that says, uh, do the, does the legislative body approve the planning board being a committee for a capital improvement?
Does the legislative body approve the planning board making a capital improvements for the plan?
Right, so you're not gonna bring the capital improvement plan to the town meeting.
You have to.
I'll do it, right, so then that gets, then now you can.
So you wouldn't even make a separate committee to set up and where do it?
Yeah, cause I think we can get it done faster than we're. We'll do, we'll be doing.
Okay.
Because like I said, it's gonna be. Three pages.
You said two.
Two. Well, it's gotta be some blah, blah in there.
We're we're.
It's going to be short.
Yeah, we're gonna.
It's going to be short.
Data. I think the statistical data is gonna be longer than the actual write-up of the improvements.
Yeah.
Well, I think the school piece would be more important, only from a timing perspective, um, we're in your. You s- you staggering projects.
Yep.
I mean, but at least for now, I'm here. In the future, you could always invite. Somebody in the board, school board, to do the.
So we have a, let me, let me spend some. Let me rephrase that. Let me spend some quick time with the town attorney. Um, and talk to her about this stuff. No, no.
And then obviously explain everything, town meeting, what what are planned to go through.
So as a, as a note from the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
You all you would have, because we're not voting on anything and because we're not, um, we're not. Doing any business with any with the townspeople, for something like this, you could say, um, the planning board discussed, um, the process for C I P. Is that something?
Yeah.
Yeah. And and a lot of new minute takers always think that they have to write everything, so I'm gonna pause and just and give you some help and and some some guidance on that.
Just point to me and say, read it, yeah.
Yep, yep.
I have a little search information, information of.
Yeah, you could, you could just say, discuss C I P and GMO.
Yep, and that's it. And then you're good. Alright, um, so I'm gonna take the action to call Jane. I'm gonna talk to her about the C I P and the GMO. I'll report back in a minute.
Alright.
Okay. Um, so that'll be for this September. Okay, let's uh, let's get. Let's save six for last and let's, let's hear about the updates from Governor Aya.
He will pass these along.
Oh, hats.
Yeah, they're packed.
Oh, they're packed.
Okay.
They're gonna have a packet?
Yep, yes.
They're the uh.
Alright, so this is, this is the summary of the changing to the changes to the zoning plan. So, um. I I put in the laws, the actual laws, to the ones that are really pertaining to Freuden. We don't care about the multifamily residential development on commercial and rural. So I'm not worried about that.
Yes.
Um. The one residential parking unit space per unit, I put that one in there, so you actually had a copy of S B two eighty four. Um, it's not limiting us to just having one parking space per unit, but you can read it over and see what there's about. Uh. H B four fifty seven, we can't restrict people to two occupants per bedroom. We don't, so it's not anything that pertains to us. Two eighty three, that's the floor area ratio. That's the low grade, so basements, you can't use the basement floor area ratio if you compete a floor area ratio. We don't. So it doesn't pertain to us. Um, let's see, one stairwell, two eighty two, again, doesn't pertain to us. We don't make people play in extra stairways for fire and so. Okay, two eighty one, there we go. Class six roads, building permits. So this one, it's permitting the issuance of building permits without requiring approval from the governing body. So in order to get a building permit for the erection of a building on a class six or private road, the applicant will only need to sign and report. At the registry of deeds in liability with. Um. Just acknowledging that the municipality will not maintain roads. It's not accessible, blah, 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 and they're not us. So and also. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall provide that the lot and any buildings are insurable. So we need to prepare a standard liability later. I already have one that's a lot. Exactly what we have here in this law, but you should look at. S B two eighty one, which I included. Because it also says that. If we want, the select board and the planning board can actually create a policy. Because still, the applicant has to come to the planning board and have the planning board look at it. And then give advice to the select board. So it's a two-step process still.
Look at, you say get it being.
Building on a class six or private road.
Okay.
The planning board still has to give their.
Approval.
Approval or consideration to the select board. Typically, what we have in Freuden and we've been doing is it's a lot of record. He allow a voting from. He haven't been allowing subdivisions because of the stat and the insurance.
And that's not changed with this.
That's not changed with that. It doesn't allow subdivisions. It's just allow.
Is this basically just saying, making us do what we're already doing?
Correct.
People felt the waiver.
All it's doing.
And it doesn't even say they need insurance. It said it needs to be insurable.
Insurable. Which. It's better if they have insurance for us because if we can't get up there with a fire truck.
Yep.
And they didn't get the insurance and it says right here that they need to have some kind of. Insurable property.
Mm-hmm.
They can't come back to the town and say, well, you can get up there.
So. Then this allows us to refuse a building permit if they can't provide insurable evidence.
Correct.
So then we shouldn't even issue a building permit until the insurable evidence can be provided.
Right.
With that.
Say a letter, which is a letter from the insurance company stating that they will ensure the property once a rat.
And and the, I brought in a class six road liability waiver and building on class six road policy. I showed you guys, I showed the select board. It's sitting in my book of policies and procedures, waiting for anybody to decide that they wanna do something. And one of them, so that it should be insured. Because again, in this soon happy world we live in, if even if they sign the waiver. And we can't get up there because our trucks can't make it, they could still come back to the town and say.
This this seems like it offered pretty good amount of protection.
Now it's a law.
Yeah. Um, and so if you're building on just a regular road, not class six, you don't need to show that it's insurable?
Because we're supposed to maintain our roads so we can get up there with emergency equipment.
Yep.
If you wanna build on a class six road, this is saying they can't stop you. Which a lot of towns were doing because they were just saying, no, you, we're not issuing a building permit because we can't get out there. We're not taking the the risk of having you out there where we can get to you. Curtains always been like, yeah, you wanna do it, do it.
Okay.
Would this also apply to building on private?
Yep.
Um, and and that was your primary problem with building on. On a plastic road, the whole wall, right, going back and up.
Yep, no subdivision.
It's the town, it's the town liability.
Town liability. Yep.
Now we got that.
I just, the town needs to be covered. And again, it's not that if you have a lot, you can go out. I don't, the municipal softball, we don't want that. You can build on it. We just wanna make sure the town has cover. But just because you have a lot, doesn't mean you go up there and start building twenty houses. Because then we have a premature subdivision. And everybody can come in and say, oh, hey, you know what? There's a whole bunch of people up there now. They want you to start maintaining the road. It's not what you signed up for.
Kim?
Yes.
This does not take effect until July one twenty six?
July one of twenty six.
So we have some time.
Yep.
And also, isn't this something that reflects the select board?
Well, this is an update design. From what I can see, it's an update to the building permit and to create an insurance certification. So you've got to create some type of of form. That's given on building permit issuance on a class six. I'm gonna give some type of form since you're required to get your certificate of insurance. You have it on?
Yeah, I already put it in.
But it's the select board that issues the building.
That's not, yeah, but we create these documents.
We don't, yeah.
Well, we have. Well, that's in, that's built into your, into your waiver.
It's been, I've had that. It's been, I've had that for a long time.
So it should just be a checklist item on the, on the building.
It should be a checklist, yeah, alright, so I can add that to as a checklist item on the building permit.
But we have a new building permit, yeah.
We have.
If, right now, the class six waiver is connected to building permit, so every time we get a building permit, people have already just filled these out, even though they're on a class five road.
Okay. Alright.
Um, let's see.
Six.
Yep, so this is the building and subdivision, so again, this is the whole thing about authorized by. Local governing body, by the comment and review from the planning board, so this is um. Again, if we have a policy, which we, we kind of have a policy, we need to clarify it, which we, we allow for you to build, we just don't have the subdivisions. This is also included in the packet. And you notice, again, condition, this bill modifies the statute governing the town for appealing to the zoning board adjustment. Thirty days. So if somebody's not happy with what the planning board. Or the select board say, and they decide to go to the zoning board, the zoning board only has thirty days. To make a decision.
Then somebody gonna tell this.
So. And this one is twenty twenty five.
Yeah, so from the thirteen, so so I guess my question on this is, how does, so. That's great if the person owns the private road, but what happens if the private road has a butter on each side?
So, on a private road. Everybody, and that's, there's a law for that, everybody owns a portion of the private road, and it's like adding a portion of a private driveway. They all are responsible for their portion of maintenance on that private road.
What if the line extends across the road?
Their deed?
What if there's no, so what you're referring to is centerline ownership of the private road.
Right.
Each a butter, by technically own the centerline.
That's the way it's supposed to.
Correct, but if the deed says the private road extends across to the property line of the butter. The butter then has no assets.
That, that I think would end up being a civil matter in a civil court between the two landowners, as to who owns what property.
This only really takes effect if we have a policy on building private roads.
Yep, we do have a policy on building on private roads, same, we've never confirmed, same thing as class six. You own a, you own a parcel on a private or a class six road, you can go and build your house. You can't subdivide on it, but you can go and build a house.
Okay.
Okay. No real change of payment.
No real change.
Yeah.
The only thing that I would suggest, because so many of our private roads were done way before. There's no article of an, of agreement in any of the private roads, so everybody just does what they want, they don't get together and fix their private roads or. Um.
Okay.
Um, H B ninety two, uh, we don't have anybody that sits on the zoning board and the planning board, or so it's about recusal.
With it.
We all kinda do that anyways. And the vesting time for projects and subdivisions, um. Anything that's done here is really kind of done fast. And this, I think we need to look at and incorporate into our subdivision rules and. So it went from a three-year period to a five-year period in seven years. So, they have five years, they have to get some substantial work done, and then they have seven years, no new zoning laws will change anything that they do.
Okay.
And then, the laws, and then we have the revised laws on the eight years. So nothing really changed for us, we got ahead of the game with our.
A D U.
A D U ordinance. We're allowing detached and attached, which is what they're saying.
Right.
Uh, there was one change, uh, there was one change in issue this stuff, and that is that um, detached A D Us. If there is an existing building that can be converted on a property, this is, this is a sticky wicket. Because if there's an existing building that can be converted for an A D U, there is no size requirement.
So it says, a municipality shall allow accessory dwelling units to be converted from existing structures. Including but not limited to hatch carriages, regardless of whether such structures violate current dimensional requirements for setbacks or lot coverage. It's not the A D U, the A D U, whether you put it in a.
Square footage doesn't matter.
The square footage of the A D U still matters, it has to be used.
I I read, I read.
Which one is the?
No, I read that they said that for existing structures, the size requirement does not apply.
No, it does.
Where, where it does.
On the very edge end of it, but it's, it's the fact that if that barn, so say you put it in a barn.
Mm hmm.
And the barn existed, and it's twelve feet from the setback, you can put that, you can put that. It's right there.
I hope I have that for you too. Like, my last one on mine is the best time.
Yes.
You don't have the A D Us?
Oh.
It looks like an A D U.
What number is that?
Uh, it's its own, it's a separate.
Two eighty four, two eighty one or?
No, it's a whole, this is what it looks like.
Oh, it's a second half of.
You're good, dad.
Um, that's the only thing.
Definitely want to hold on to that.
So. If if, we cannot limit bedrooms, but it's the law, setbacks are the law coverage in non-compliant structure. But if we say there's a size requirement, then the rest of it has to be a barn, they can give it a barn, they can change it into office use, they can use storage, but it has to be within outside of the apartment.
And we took it off.
Yeah, they took it out. The only thing that an existing structure does.
So if you have a five thousand square foot barn, they're saying that you could build a nine hundred and fifty square foot A D Us.
We say a thousand.
We say a thousand, right?
Yes.
So that you're saying that the, that the building, it's okay that the building's big, but the A D U has to be contained within the building at the size.
Yes.
Cause that wasn't the original law, the original law said, did not.
It's like detached A D U if it's inside of another building.
Yes.
As long as the H A portion is below a thousand square foot, it, it's.
Yes.
So they did that because they wanted to be able to convert. Roger, cool, sorry, existing structure.
Okay.
Alright, well, that's a good case. We don't have to deal with that, do we, use things that we can find?
I can send them to you, but I'm.
Somewhere down the line, so if, how are you talking?
I don't know.
Yes, I'm gonna get you somebody who will.
No, I think them's gonna take care of it.
You know, that's standing there, yeah, they're allowing two A D Us, but I say no quick, then I go wrong, you're not allowed, right, they're, they, I don't.
Attached or attached, I'm not going there.
So, yeah, we got ahead of everything by getting that A D U ordinance easy. So, we only get, they only get one A D U.
Yep.
They have to, they cannot convey them separately, they have to live in one of the other structures. So, so many of the things that could have happened in an A D U, we're ahead of it all.
Oh, uh. It actually does specify a maximum square foot, but only for lives.
Right.
Yep.
I don't think that was, we said a thousand.
We said a thousand.
Does that mean they have to lower it from one fifty?
Um, it's gonna be a bit bigger than fifty.
No, it's the minimum of seven fifty.
Well, here it says minimum seven fifty, it will shall not exceed nine hundred.
Nine hundred and fifty.
But otherwise.
Oh, and that's otherwise off of that, yep. That finishes these things.
So that also means then that somebody could go in and ask for a variance.
Yeah.
And to build a fifteen hundred square foot.
They would have to show us, we appreciate it.
They'd have to show us.
Wheelchair, go there.
A wheelchair.
That's a perfect example, this wheelchair, an A D U for a wheelchair's gonna be bigger, because she's got turning radiuses and operating, needs tools. That would be something I think that they would approve.
Anything that, that comes in before the planning board, or the select board, or the zoning board, there should be. A way to have a waiver for the requirements, or a way to vary the ordinances, otherwise, they're too rigid.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, any questions on this subject?
Excuse me.
Alright, let's move on to chapter six.
It's got changes to laws.
And since, since I wasn't, since I wasn't here for the last billion and a half, Aaron, can you, or Kim, can you walk us through this? On what we've done and. Ship this off to Vicky the finalist.
I sent, I, so I sent the reports to you.
Okay, good.
There, I have to pull up.
I did, I'll admit, I did not open her latest one, I'm assuming it's the one with your changes.
I don't know, I didn't see anything from her today.
What's the date of?
Here's the first one. Of course, this doesn't look like it has anything else, but we still have all the notes.
Something over it.
These are all chapters, or you have to.
Okay, so.
Information for jobs.
I, I was, I came in, I had a day off, came into town hall, and. For Paul had to run around, because there was one or two's B A B in here, and moved the computer around, so I could speak to Alpa and get these reports. Um. So, these are canned reports, and they tell you, your residential land only, residential land in current use. Your commercial industrial, your use by type, um. So what I did, on the itself spreadsheet, is I took the information, and I put it into what we need. So according to what Vicky has, twenty four thousand acres is Croydon. So I, I took that. And I took, I went through. The property record cards for Blue Mountains, and you see it on this spreadsheet. And this is all of their land that's in current use, all of their land that's not in current use, all of their wetland. And they have one thousand one hundred and eighty-eight acres that is completely unproductive, you see it's steep. So, next time they file a timber intent, I'm gonna make sure that they're not timbering on that unproductive land. That gives them a total acreage of eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy point four eight zero acres.
So it's all thirty percent.
So if you apply the formula of the amount of acres against total acres, it's forty nine point zero four three six six seven acres.
Yeah.
Compared to Croydon, so it's almost fifty percent of Croydon. That's.
Alright, now we're gonna put a total somewhere, so you can make that, I mean, you started with, Croydon is twenty four thousand, is it, and then. You're gonna put total for Blue Mountain totals for.
It's right on.
It's right there, totals.
About seventy seven.
But.
Where is all this, are we adding just right now?
Yeah, you're gonna put that in, in the red.
Oh.
Yeah, the, the problem is the data dispute, you try to go to justice, one family residential, so many of our one family residential is in kinds. So I can't give you. I can't just extrapolate out.
Okay.
Point five acres, that is just one family.
Should we just go through all the sparks that are still open and decide if we can.
Yep.
Add something in, I thought that was, that's what you were.
I, it's what I was trying to do, it's what I was trying to do with this spreadsheet, so I wanted you to see all the data, because I don't, I wanna see what we can do in here. So the total developed land in Croydon is approximately how much percent? So the total developed land. Is right here at the bottom.
So can you give me, what's the number?
Well, sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy-five acres.
Okay.
Great. Well, is that the right developed parcel?
What the, uh, total land, how total developed land?
But it doesn't add up. And I think it's because it's taking the land from Blue Mountain, Y M C A, because Y M C A has some of the developed land. So, let me, let me add it up.
Developed. I mean, this could be approximate to it, so, as long as you're within the ballpark. You'll never get the exact number.
No, I'm never gonna get the exact number.
Sixty three, sixty.
So you get sixteen thousand eight hundred and forty-nine acres of developed land. That's one family, two family, three family, and commercial.
Alright, so total developed land.
Sixteen thousand eight forty-nine, right?
Yep.
And what percentage of that is, what is the percentage?
Twenty four thousand is the total.
So he took.
Well. Sixty five percent.
Thousand.
Well, it'll divide by twenty-four if he wrote the percent.
Um.
Be sixty-six percent.
Sixty-nine percent.
No, then this, but if you go up and add all the.
They don't add up.
Don't.
Only at the word approximately.
So how do you wanna handle some of this stuff, about like that?
Yes, so we've got this, add an actual less than minus.
Yep, this is.
Says it's not.
Yeah, I'd like acreage to do as many.
This time I can go all.
Yep. Hey, add the reference to, hang on, add the reference to the fishing game land, which is nineteen hundred and fifty acres.
Where is that at, is it the second paragraph?
Yeah, so we've got, we've got Blue Mountain Forest and Y M C A, we've got the New Hampshire Fishing Game Land, which is the Ruger Forest. And our other conservation land, which happens to be Upper Valley Trust and the um, Buck Bonar, I forget the name of it, but that was ten.
Oh, so I think after the Y M C A, you just add another sentence.
Yeah, after the Y M C A.
Do not include fish in game.
Ruger Forest land, New Hampshire Fishing Game.
Yep.
Ruger Forest.
Eight point one five percent of Croydon, nineteen hundred and fifty-eight acres.
You know, I got those numbers.
Parenthesis, yeah.
Yep.
What was the percentage?
Parenth, uh, eight point one five.
Yep.
And eight percent, and then nineteen hundred and fifty-eight acres.
Across all the.
Nineteen hundred and fifty.
Proximal. And that's at the total land area, yep.
Yep, and the Y M C A land, you want the figures for that? In the references, Y M C A is three point six eight acres, or three point, three point six percent.
Three point seven.
Yeah, three point seven.
Round up.
Eight hundred and eighty-three. Eight, eight eighty-four.
Yeah.
Eight hundred and eighty-four?
Yep.
Okay, got it.
And then there's other conservation land, if you wanna do that, but I, I mean, it's, there's.
Yeah, okay, so what's the percentage of the wet?
And did you want me to put in Corbin Park too, of Blue Mountains?
It's in there.
It's in there, got the, oh.
It's at the bottom, Corbin Park makes up forty-three point five percent of Corbin land here.
Yep.
Says here forty-nine.
Now I think I have an acceptable.
Says forty-nine, forty-nine, correct, that's a forty-nine point whatever it just came up with. On the fourth element, Corbin Park.
Maybe I should include all, sorry, so the Y M C A was three point six? How did that sum up?
Ah.
Yeah, three point seven.
Seven, and what was the um, fishing game was?
Eight.
Eight point one five.
Eight point one five.
And then we've got another X percent of the town is wetland, we know that?
So.
Yep, we've been in these.
No.
Who's all?
Six point four.
If the wetlands is included in.
The wetlands is included in one of the land there.
Well, we're, I think we're slicing it out separate.
And I honestly didn't see a lot of land, so I, I don't see wetlands in um, Camp Conestown, and I don't see wetlands. So I didn't see that captured in the land parcels. So I don't know if we can get all of our wet. I don't, I don't think that we can get that figure confidently in.
Can I just delete this paragraph?
Yeah.
Do we know what percentage of the total Croydon land is conserved?
Um, it's fourteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven acres that's in private and conservation. So the conservation lands.
Mm hmm.
That is not fishing game, is a hundred and twenty-five acres.
What's the percentage?
Um, point. Um, point, zero point five two acres. Uh, zero point, sorry.
Zero five two percent, point five two percent. A half of one percent.
Yeah. So, um.
That's a good number.
So I believe this one.
You don't need weapons. Do we wanna say see table six point one below? What is table six point one?
It's referenced a few times.
So Vicky must have to. So she'll update that.
Okay, so you've centered that data, right?
Yep.
Alright, so that's perfect.
So I have the.
Aaron, why don't we just plug that in there since we're gonna send it? We just. Yeah, I know, that's why.
Single family residential acre.
So, single family residential acres was sixteen thousand seven thousand.
I, I don't know how she exceeded.
And then two family was one oh nine, what, what's one nine?
One nine twenty?
Four nine.
That's acres.
Yep. And three family was, multifamily was seven point four eight.
I'll see that the family one, should I add it?
No.
Normal. You can put it in with the two families.
Oh, well, the totals aren't gonna add up. I'll just add it here?
Yeah.
Two families, so one oh nine plus.
Seven point four eight.
Can you give me the total?
Yes.
One hundred and sixty point four eight.
Municipal facilities.
I did not add up the municipal facilities because when I ran that, half of them were state, half of them were municipal, I did not like those.
Take it out.
Yep.
Commercial.
So I have commercial, I have a hundred and fifty-eight point.
And they've actually broken it up by. Cause they've got Corbin YMCA, other, commercial.
Yeah.
So we've got Corbin.
Corbin's not right, so eleven thousand seven seventy point four eight. So eleven thousand four four. Eleven seven seven.
Yeah, eleven seven seven zero.
YMCA translates to forty-nine point oh four percent.
One nine point oh four.
Yep. And then YMCA is actually. Eight hundred and eighty-three point six.
Four in the percentage?
It was eight point one six.
Other commercial.
The other commercial that I have is a hundred and fifty-eight acres, eight, a hundred and fifty-eight point six three.
Percentage? A hundred and fifty-eight.
Point sixty. Hundred equals, um, point zero zero six six.
Zero, zero, six.
No, point zero zero six six.
You can put around it behind that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that would be a good money maker for us, but there isn't anything.
What about, do we have roads specified in?
No.
Delete it?
Yes.
I, I would actually leave it because we don't have anything. And they didn't give me anything for utilities, so, well, we have four utilities. Um, and there's some right of ways, there weren't any. Numbers for the right of ways?
Considered land, did you use the right numbers?
No.
No.
What's, what's the correct number?
The correct number would be, whatever the numbers needed to be equal twenty-four thousand.
But we, we, we mentioned it, uh, conservative land.
So I'm gonna let Vicky figure that.
Oh, it was like point five percent.
Yeah, that's the other concern there, but I don't know if he wants the state to be in there.
It's what, states?
The state.
So, what I would do, Aaron, is I'd have another column underneath conservative land, I put the one twenty-five in there.
So if she has.
Use other lands, I just use, use a parent, use lines as other lands and then make the difference up.
Yeah.
With four to twenty-four thousand.
Because if, if she put the Ruger Forest as well as the, the other con- conservation lands. So one point, eight point one five.
Consider land, one twenty-five.
Yep, then I, I think that's.
And that was, um, zero, one five percent.
No, point, zero point zero, it's one fifty-nine is zero point.
Well, wow then.
Alright, so let's add that out and the number for other land is gonna be.
Up here though, in this paragraph, we had, um, conservative land is zero point five.
It's point, zero point five, yes.
But that's.
Percent, so that would be point zero 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 five.
No, it's point, it's zero point five.
Zero point, percent.
Percent.
Which moves the decimal, and it was percent, half of one percent. Well, you put the percent of that. So you do the same thing.
Oh, no, I probably do, I did the commercial.
You won't put the percent of that, I mean, it's ten.
That's five, initial, point zero zero.
Other country.
Yeah.
What was that number again?
Zero zero six six.
So she's at the point zero seven percent? Yeah, that would make sense.
Yep.
Okay, and then what's the total land area?
Uh, the other, one twenty-five point four. Oh, twenty-four thousand.
So now we need to make a difference on this one.
Yeah, but it didn't say. Sixteen thousand five seventy-five and eleven thousand is twenty-seven thousand acres.
I know. That's why I said it doesn't make sense, but it's because some of the one family residential is included in Corbin Park. And it's included in Conestown, because those, those structures are considered as residential structures. So the numbers are skewed when you get, when you run these reports. So I would have to sit down and run through all the property reports, pull the ones out. So in our single family residential, we have to pull out the Corbin Park ones. And the Conestown ones.
Well, that would make sense, but is that gonna give you seven thousand acre? Oh, how much are we off by here?
Five.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the YMCA Camp Conestown. The raw numbers don't come anywhere near eight hundred and eighty-three acres. Are they counting the lake in there?
I don't know, so the lake belongs to the state.
But if you, no, seriously, we'll just look quickly at the numbers, the four numbers for the YMCA town, and make sure as hell that it comes up to eight eighty-three, so I don't know. How they're computing.
Get rid of the whole thing.
Yeah, right.
Dude, I, I spent, I don't know how much time trying to figure out these numbers.
Well, I don't think there's sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy-five acres of single family, that seems way too much, so I think you've got the Corbin land mucked in there.
No, that seems way too much.
Way too much. So the Corbin land, everything.
Cause if it was said to me there was five thousand acres of single family residential, I would believe that now.
It'd almost be easier to just. Solve for a single family by making that, what makes the difference?
Yeah.
Get rid of the stuff on the single family.
Think you're absolutely right.
So let's see what that comes out to, let's see if they.
Add up the other stuff. Because I think that's gonna come out to around six, five or six thousand acres, which I think is about right. I mean, most of our lots are three, four acre lots, nobody has huge time.
That would be.
Yeah, does this, do these numbers include the water? Yeah, they usually do, do it, okay.
So that would make this, um, ten thousand.
Yeah, I think that would be a, that would be a lot more accurate.
Let me do a reverse math from the children's.
Yeah.
Yep.
So here's the summary of values by use, you tell me what you see under a single family residential, one-half residential.
Yep, okay, so that adds up to twenty-four thousand. Hope we can all get rid of this other one, it makes sense, single family may or may not be correct.
It could be the manufactured, not the ma- the cat car. They could have the cat down in there as a single family because that's what it's sold by. Again, the heights going through every single car to go through the lake.
Yeah, Corbin's not included in this number. That's your problem, it's not twenty-three thousand acres, it's thirty-four thousand acres. Okay. Corbin Park's not in any of these numbers. That's your problem.
So I double and added it in twice.
One half residential, there's five hundred and nine units, so fifteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-one acres, forty thousand, right?
Yes.
I would believe that. Eighty-one million dollars. Yeah, they didn't, they, there, there's not, utility electric is practically nothing.
No, there isn't anything.
Yeah, and so Corbin's not in here.
But Corbin is in Croydon.
I understand that, but it's not in this, it's not in these Avatar numbers. Is this the Dart looking? Is the Dart looking?
Yes, sir.
You see Corbin Park in there? Did you, did, did, residence on water? Um, unmanaged pine, some of this unmanaged land, did that be for them? No, no, big rich. Well, managed hardwood, unmanaged, unmanaged pine, managed other. Managed hardwood, five hundred ninety-five acres. All of that is this, that's probably the land that's for sale right now. That adds up to about eight hundred and eighty.
So when you go to current use by type, Blue Mountain Forest is in there.
How many acres is current use?
You gotta add it up by time.
Oh, again, they go mid, yeah.
Yeah, so here's the junction of her and the Central Road and it's Blue Mountain Forest.
How many acres for Blue Mountain Forest?
I have to go through and add more.
Oh, that, it's a whole, that's right, it's all, that's all over.
They're all over everywhere.
Because they have all their little. So, so my guess is, my guess is that it's a lot more acreage than twenty-three thousand acres. Mean the whole thing. I, I think you should add eleven thousand Corbin Park to that.
I, I think so, I think it.
Well, look at it this way, guys, look at this map. So Corbin Park's in y'all, that's eleven thousand acres, right? Everything else is over here, that's the rest of the town. That kinda fits in there at least two and a half times. One and a half times, I mean.
Yeah, so if you, if you do the math right now, based on twenty-four thousand acres, then Corbin Park is half of Croydon.
Lesson, it's less than.
But I can't, but I can't believe that Avatar would have a long acreage number in here on the center.
I agree, because that part would be already.
Not so you're getting taxed, this, this sheet, this sheet, I will believe.
You're not making any money on Corbin Park, that's probably why it's on almonds.
But you are, but there is a. Well, they, the cabins plus an acre, those are cats. They have forty acres on apartments.
Yeah, okay, that's.
When they head for this.
Yeah, forty acres. I think that's about, I've been in, yeah, that's about right, yeah. It's probably generous.
They have forty eight, uh, almost fifty acres out there.
It must be.
Alright, so Aaron, let's, let's, let's make this, let's, let's put this, let's put the number back. And let's make the total number higher.
Which number are we going back?
Put the single family residential should be fifteen thousand eight seventy.
Somewhere, somewhere.
You have to add them up.
Somewhere in, in the state of Manhattan, there's a number of, a number of acres in the town of Croydon, that.
That has to.
So you have to.
Then take out the twenty-four thousand and that will give the percentage.
Should we ask Champ GPC? Yeah.
Wikipedia. How many acres are in the town of Croydon?
New Hampshire.
Eighty-six point fifty-two kilometers. How many acres is eighty-six point five two kilometers square?
Okay, we have a problem.
This is why I spent, I spent days on it, I put it to give this up, all the numbers are skewed.
Somebody knows, somebody knows how many square, how many acres.
Okay, so the single family residential is not only, it's fifteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-one plus two hundred and forty-eight plus four hundred and fifty-four. Sixteen thousand five hundred and seventy-five.
Avatar of the box eighteen. The acres, this is the Avatar four.
I know.
Paul will say, what, how many acres would the town work, and then we, we start with that.
What sheet?
Did you make it up back soon?
Yes, we did. You want it back?
Yeah.
Yes, it's, but Blue Mountain is in these numbers.
It's gotta be.
In terms of the managed forest and man. It's gotta be.
Updated all the numbers. So it now says Croydon has twenty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-five.
But the single family residential is still.
I put back the fifteen.
Yeah, sixteen.
It's sixteen thousand seven thousand.
And what is the park again?
Sixteen what?
Thousand seven thousand.
Yeah, updated on.
Sorry.
How about the old town? Look at that to see if they mentioned it.
It's getting bigger.
Cause the line, no, the lines haven't changed, the young lines haven't struggled with it.
No, they did change.
What?
Yeah, we gave part of Croydon to Brantham and we took part of Croydon from, uh, Corners.
Oh, okay, so, but, so then the last master plan is her.
Yeah.
I hate it.
Even for getting full statue of the Croydon.
So what are we up to for even now?
Uh, twenty-nine thousand six hundred and.
I like that better.
I like that.
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna call, talk it with Peter out. Would he had it in square lots, it missed the conversion system for the four thousand.
Can't always trust everything.
Everything I found, I, I did the same thing. Everything I looked up with Wikipedia, everything I looked for, it says twenty-four thousand, census said twenty-four thousand, everything.
They're probably all referencing the same piece of value.
Well, and. Some of them. It's getting taxed. Does the numbers don't add up?
No, no, they don't.
Yeah, the, the old actor planned her inventory of.
Alright, there it is. Happy. Yeah, I'm happy with that.
Just says about one half of the yard of.
For now, revise that next year when we update.
No, 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 I, I, we have, I, I think the numbers are fine, but I, I wanna sanitize them and I wanna see if we can figure it out a little bit better. But I think this is good to send to Vicky, let's keep going down that thing, or is that it?
Uh, we jumped a little bit, let's see what was here, um. No, that was just edits, and, oh, this is good, I still got it.
Down phenomenally, we're all, most of the single family homes, and that'll say, should be the same percentage you have on the other page.
Yeah, and we're up to about.
Fifty-four. Leave this. Do you have a copy? If you.
Single.
I do, I do like that. That's just right there.
Very well done, these, these all need to be updated. Thank you. Twenty-four, those is twenty-nine, six hundred and.
Alright, so all I am plugging that in, I'll just finish with, uh, what, what do we wanna do about, uh, Ms. Vicky and, uh, her request for additional compensation? Because I, I, I don't understand how we. They walk along.
Can we get an analysis of this?
I was gonna ask if the board would be okay with me requesting.
I, I think we should see where we spent all the money.
Well, I can tell you that, I can tell you that in, in. Well, I can tell you that, I can tell you that, in 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 full disclosure, Vicky's done a lot more work on this than we.
Yeah, sure.
Why I think budget is where it is, because we got the master plan to live a lot faster, have our that stuff together.
And and that's why we hired them.
Correct, so, so it should be two questions, one itemized, the second question is how much more do you need? Because if it's less than five thousand dollars, we can just go to the site, what for, start an operation, you should be fine. Uh, you'll.
How about just leave it there all?
I think the initial um approval was thirteen thousand, it's changed. And and.
We had fifty thousand.
We have fifty, but we spent a couple of that for the vision session there. Actually, we didn't, we volunteered that, so we didn't actually vote.
Yeah.
And the chief gave that to us for free, so, yeah, we didn't have any. I don't know how much is left in the budget, but they're actually. We actually should be okay, because I put money in this year to cover anything. Yeah, we should be okay.
I I don't remember splitting anything.
We did.
Pretty gone, I suppose.
That's how the laptop.
But I don't think asking for an itemized statement is how it burns at all.
No, I don't mean.
Yeah, so that way, if we do need to appropriate more money, we can come in and say, this is where I like to, we can show that we spent it all. We're this close, we wanna bring it home in prime hours.
Be in the townhouse, like, I didn't spend the money, you tell you.
Yeah, yeah, okay, alright, so itemize this and knowledge to finish.
And let's get it done and get it over with and put it to bed and continue on with what we're doing.
Okay, so today is Wednesday, Aaron, you can send that to Vicky, tonight or tomorrow, yeah?
Could I take the other thing about maybe adding a school, a town, town store again? Getting out here.
No, I you know what, I would take that all out, because we don't know what it is, we don't know who's doing it, we we have no idea. And they're putting a ten year plan to do kind of stuff.
Alright, so this is all up to Vicky.
Alright, zip that off to her. And then I'll email her tomorrow afternoon and ask her for the bad ass.
And she has the reports from out of power, we'll send them to her so she's got that, if she wants to go ahead and play with the figures and. Make any other changes.
Agreed.
Was that chapter six we just did? Yes, chapter six.
And chapter seven, we're all just a little.
These two.
It's.
Yep.
Yep.
So there's nothing else to go through there.
We've got like seven people. We got eight here, like seven.
Yeah, yeah, this is big.
Alright, so then I think. Eight, eight's done, seven's done. So this is it.
Yeah, this is it, we were just waiting on getting those reports, so. I'm sorry I took so long to do it, but I got it done.
You got it done?
We we, we do need to figure out, we do need to figure out the acreage. We do need to figure that out.
Well, I I, you know what, I just. What I need to do is just get in here, take another day off and. So there's no other computer in the town hall that has Avatar. I either have to come in here on a day when. The town hall's not open. And spend the time with Avatar, which I'm not, I'm not against doing. But I felt so bad when Paul had to readjust everything, remove the computer and I thought there was a computer in that. There's not. But there's no licensing agreement with Avatar, so there's just calling Avatar and having them put um Avatar on in the system there.
Why can't we just call?
Avatar's like, how many square?
How many acres are in the town?
That's kind of a question.
Well, the whole thing is, is that until you start running reports, you don't really know what it is you want from a report, so it's the getting a hold of.
Well, if you don't have a. Uh, the denominator for all, right, which is how many acres are in the town of Croy?
It's just running the books, just get on the phone and I talk to.
But going through all of these reports, you have to go hard to to come up with the. The. And if they had some access to the. Oh, so do you come up there? Well. So naturally, well, um, the problem.
So. My, so the plan.
Yes.
Plan moving forward would be to. Spend a couple more days for a chance to pass. Acreage numbers. But then uh get back to Vicky until it finalizes.
I just didn't send it and say it was final, but we can just guarantee now is when we.
Well, that's what I figured, we could just put them in before we go to printing.
Yeah.
And we, we have until the end of September before we print. So I think that, I think that we will. We will meet again, our regular meeting, first Wednesday in September. Um and at that point in time, it's my goal to have the draft. Final draft. Of the master planning first overview. Um and approve. And then. We need to hold a public hearing. To present the final draft. Right?
Yep.
We need to vote to accept the final draft and send that to.
Legal.
Select one. So they're.
Well, so wait a minute, yeah, Vicky said she was going to be asking her legal team to make it over. That's the other thing, and yeah, we still have more with.
Yes.
I think we just.
So that'll be October. The the select board doesn't need a public hearing, we need a public.
Yes.
And then the select board approves it. And then we codifies it and gets it to the printer.
Yep.
And when I say printers, it just means finalizing into a PDF and I'll move it. And then we print, we have a print contest, that's not a question.
I don't think so. It's small, I mean, if somebody wants it, they can print it off the website, I think maybe having a few display copies around might be nice.
So we could staple those.
Or.
Yeah, they could, yeah. They could just do that.
But we could do fifty or a hundred copies, staples pretty reasonably. If we wanna have a few of our copies in the hall.
We could, I I don't wanna give them away. People can.
Well, if they come into the meeting, they're gonna wanna be able to.
Yeah.
That's true.
Now, people coming to meetings are gonna wanna read them. So we're gonna have to tell someone. But I, if they're gonna. Change it, because at the public hearing, if there's a lot of people who decide that they wanna change something. They, you don't have to change it.
Well, that would be before, that would be during our public hearing, for example, at select point, so that's not a problem, but it's not, it's still, it's still in the final draft form at that point, it's not the final.
We don't wanna print fifty copies.
Correct, no, 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 I'm not gonna print fifty for that, that'll be a stamp, correct, yeah, yeah, we'll stamp it out, we'll, those will be photo copies, those are not gonna be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright. Motion for adjournment?
Move.
All in favor?
I.
Karen?